Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Schoenheimer.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandalian.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Edelman is absent. Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers. First under that is comments by mayor. We get to do something tonight that's one of my favorite things that I get to do as being mayor, and that's swearing some new police officers. I'm going to ask Chief Helled to come up, and we're going to swear in David Miniscalco, Aaron Krujko, and Eric Bloomberg. Chief?
Real quick, I asked them if they wanted me to say anything, and they said no, but I'm going to anyway.[83.11][83.11](laughter) And you know how much I like talking up here, so you know this is something I feel like really strongly about. This is really a good time. This is fun when we get new officers come in because you kind of get to watch them grow over the years and see where they came from and how they develop into our officers of the future. I always kind of like to think about it, they go to the academy, it's like a big block of clay, they knock off the edges down there, and then we fine-tune it, and we get them back here. They spend 10 weeks at the Police Academy, they graduated back in September 25th, so they've been working for a little while now. Matter of fact, Eric is actually on duty right now, the guy in the middle, so he'll be running out here real quick so we can get this done. So with that, I have nothing else. Step forward, guys.
Raise your hand, please, and repeat after me. I. State your name.
I, Eric Marso.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The constitutions of the United States and the state of Illinois.
The constitutions of the United States and the state of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce.
And will diligently enforce.
The laws of the state of Illinois.
The laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Lake Forest.
And the city of Lake Forest.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.[184.70][184.70](applause) Stay here, chief, just so you know. (inaudible) shift, because there's probably one or two in the audience want to get a picture too of something more than your back.[205.84][205.84](laughter)
There you go.
If you want, you can actually walk up if you want to take a picture.
Yeah.
Or if you want them to take selfies.[222.12][222.12](laughter) And we'll make these available for you also. (inaudible).
We have a few tonight. Senior Resource Commission Nancy Carey is a reappointment from the 4th Ward. The Housing Trust Fund Board, Tom Grant is a reappointment, or is an appointment, and Lori Sundberg is also an appointment. And a new member of the Park and Rec Board, Steve Reimer from Ward 4. I need approval of those appointments, please, a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, unanimously approved. Also tonight, we're going to make an appointment of a city representative and a public member for the TIF Joint Review Board, the proposed TIF District for Laurel-West Avenue Redevelopment Project. And tonight, we're proposing Robert Kiley as a city representative and Jack Reisenberg as the public member. Do I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are approved as well. And that concludes my report. Item number 2 this evening, comments by city manager Bob Kiley.
Two quick comments. One, just remind everybody that tomorrow, please go out and exercise your responsibility to vote, if you haven't already done so. We've been very busy here at City Hall with early voting, so I think there's a lot of interest in this election. Second, it's my pleasure to introduce someone who is no stranger, I think, to the City Council. He's been in these chambers before, representing Lake Forest Open Lands and a partner of the city, is John Centel, the president of Lake Forest Open Lands. So, John?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I have the privilege of serving as the president of Lake Forest Open Lands Association, and I thank you for the invitation tonight to spotlight a little bit about Lake Forest Open Lands Association. While most in our community know about Lake Forest Open Lands Association, many may not know or beware of the breadth and depth of the activities we do in this community, so I'd like to take about the next 10 minutes or so and share a little bit about our history of saving land in the community, highlight how we help to bridge connections to nature, and then also share a little bit about our longstanding and valued partnership with the city. Since our city's founding, there's been a common thread that's defined our community, a respect for the natural landscape that defines and helps to differentiate Lake Forest. It's easy to forget that where we live is incredibly special in terms of the landscape all around us. I can't think of anywhere else in North America that has the mix of lakeshore to ravine to woodland to savanna and prairie. And this natural landscape that gives our community a special sense of history, a special sense of place, not unlike Market Square or the College. But the fact that so much of our natural character has been saved is no accident. I'd like to think that Lake Forest Open Lands is really a reflection of a respect for the land that differentiates our community from others in northern Illinois. I'd even suggest that we're a community that's grounded, grounded in a conservation ethic that makes our open spaces central to who we are. We owe thanks to so many for all we've accomplished over the years, to our city staff, and of course, the mayors and aldermen and commissioners over the years, and of course, the leadership of our many board members, including David Moore, who serves on our board. But I really want to acknowledge the vision of our founders. Consider that 1967, the year that we were incorporated, was about five years before the very first Earth Day celebration and before landmark legislation such as the Clean Air and Clean Water Acts. The land trust movement was barely on the radar screen nationally at that time, but fortunately, there was a small but tenacious group of local residents that saw the need to start preserving land in Lake Forest before it disappeared, and thank goodness they did. I always like to say that Lake Forest Open Lands is in the forever business. We always try to take the long view for the community, and after nearly five decades, we remain dedicated to three core principles: land preservation, restoration, and environmental education to ensure that all generations in our community have a meaningful, lasting connection to nature and our land. And we're proud of the legacy in our community. Over 840 acres preserved and managed, we are the largest private landowner in Lake Forest. We are the first and only reaccredited land trust in Illinois, a mark of distinction awarded from our national governing body. Over 45,000 children educated over the years. We're considered a leader among national land trusts. Several of our parcels are dedicated Illinois nature preserves right in our community, not only beautiful, but home to both threatened and endangered species. We're an independent nonprofit, and we rely solely on donations. We do not receive any tax support for our work. We have a staff of 15 employees, and perhaps most impressive, 20% of our residents are members of Lake Forest Open Lands, a percentage that is incredibly high compared to the national average for land trusts. And finally, every dollar donated to Lake Forest Open Lands goes right back into our community. Today, we have six nature preserves and a public park with over 12 miles of walking trails, open year-round to the public, 365 days a year, all within our boundaries for all to enjoy, and there's more that we plan to do. We offer special places for all to enjoy right in our own backyard. You may recognize some of these: the Deprey Bridge at Skokie River Nature Preserve, the wetland over at West Skokie Nature Preserve, and my favorite vista in Lake Forest, which is the George Beach Trail at Middle Fork Savannah. I like to put this picture in here. This is Laurel Avenue in 1975. Just less than 40 years ago, Laurel Avenue was a two-track dirt road. It's really not all that long ago. But it brings the point that this aerial taken in the early '70s is of our Shaw Prairie. Open Lands believes that our remaining natural areas are precious. Not only are they vital to hundreds of plants and animals who call them home, but our natural areas make Lake Forest a special place to live, work, and raise our families. The city has embraced and encouraged our efforts. I call your attention to the resolution in 2002 that affirmed a policy to preserve our natural assets through all means, particularly noting the donation of conservation easements. Over the years, Open Lands has employed varied and creative tools to save land and preserve the character of our community. We buy land, we preserve land through conservation developments such as Everett Farm, we encourage the dedication of city parcels for open space, we encourage native landscaping, and of course, use conservation easements, which perhaps is our most effective legal tool. Imagine the dollar value of all the property we've saved for our community. It's pretty impressive. And conservation easements could be our most successful land-saving tool. Today, we hold over 80 conservation easements in our community and have saved approximately 265 acres of open space with this approach. It's really a win-win for nature, for landowners, and our community. You see these conservation easements all around town and likely appreciate them, but aren't even aware that they're actually conservation easements, like this property on Sheridan Road, and this on Walden Road. Of course, there's Streetscape Vista on North Waukegan, West Laurel Avenue, and Woodland Road. But along with preserving the land, managing all of our land is a big job. We have a team of four full-time restoration ecologists who work closely with the city staff to exchange information and constantly work to restore our natural areas. They are experts not only on the land, but they understand our community's land. Many of them grew up right here in Lake Forest and, in essence, are caring for their own homesteads. But bridging connections to nature through education is also essential to our mission and is a cornerstone of what we do. Our philosophy, what we believe, is that time and nature is an essential investment in our children's and communities' health. And our environmental education programs are based out of our conservation campus at the Lockhart Family Nature Center and the restored armored gatehouse at Melody Farm Nature Preserve. The nature center and our headquarters is named after former residents and renowned artist Jim Lockhart. This year, we were pleased to unveil the restoration of the historic armor wash house into the Barbara Eldridge Classroom for Environmental Education, available for all to use in our community. And nearly every child in Lake Forest benefits from our education programs. Over the course of each year, 3,200 children have the opportunity to participate in one of our naturalist-led environmental education programs. In addition to our school programs, we offer many summer camps for kids, all the way from first grade through middle school. And our nationally recognized program, the Center for Conservation Leadership, is now in its fifth year. It reaches middle and high school students from diverse backgrounds, both within and beyond our borders, with the goal of developing the next generation of conservation leaders through leadership training, community service, and mentored internships. But really, volunteers are our lifeblood. There's an opportunity for everyone of any age or skill level to learn and make a difference working with Lake Forest Open Lands. Here's a couple of our Bluebird monitors working in the field. And of course, we're committed to promoting native plants in our community and have been conducting native plant sales for nearly a decade, and now, in partnership with the city, we have a long-term focus to help residents re-green our community with native trees, and have had three very successful joint tree sale events in the past year. And of course, September brings the lighting of the bonfire. Bagpipes is an event like no other in Chicago, and it's one of the great Lake Forest traditions. But finally, it's important to acknowledge our very strong partnership with the city. Together, over many years, we've worked together to increase open space, positively affected zoning, instituted successful conservation developments, and collaborated on restoration of open spaces. Together, we've greatly enhanced the character and quality of life in our community. For example, this year, we've partnered on the Ravine Restoration and Outreach Program. Of course, we've helped the city with the re-greening program, supporting EAB messaging, native tree sales, and also participating in community forums. We are pleased to be part of the Hospital Advisory Committee, and we continue with our restoration of the Prairie Bike Path, and over the last decade, we've invested over $120,000 to restore the Prairie Bike Path. We're also pleased to have a 20-year master lease with the city to help with native management of 204 acres of the city's most valuable open space, including McCormick Ravine, the Moore Shore Bike Path, West Campus Nature Preserve, Carroll Meadows, and not to mention our joint workdays in helping to prepare land descriptions and management proposals for other areas such as South Park Woods. The master lease is really important. It's important in that it's a recognition of not only the natural, but the economic value of our city's open spaces and the need to work together to save them and maintain our quality of life in our community. The close working relationship between our city and Open Lands is really viewed as a model partnership by other communities, and there's much more we can do together. We're proud to be a trusted partner and conservation resource for the city and welcome the opportunity to expand this role to help our community. So in closing, we thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about Open Lands tonight. Our members are proud to help make Lake Forest a community like no other, and so we encourage all to get involved with Lake Forest Open Lands. So just give us a call, and we'd be happy to save some land for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John, very much. Any questions for John? I have to, I don't have a question, John, but I have to make a comment. You may, someone may have heard me say this before, but in one of my first meetings I had with the Metropolitan Mayor's Council, and I had a chance to meet a mayor of a southern suburb who came right up to me, saw I was from Lake Forest, came right up to me and said, "You know, Mayor, I'm so jealous." I said, "You're jealous?" He said, "Yeah, I'm jealous of what you have." And I'm thinking, okay, what's he going to say? The beach, the lakefront, Market Square? He said, "Your Open Lands." He said, "It would be so great to have those in our community." So you may think that it's only here, you're being noticed a lot of other places as well, and we're terribly proud of the work you do, John. So thank you to you and your team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
That completes the report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Audit committee report for fiscal year 2014 and the annual financial report presented by Lucinda Byer, Audit Committee Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to dress you tonight. Our committee has seven members. I serve as the chair. Amy Krebs, Andy Logan, Donna Callahan, Dean Steber. The mayor is an ex-officio member. George Pandaloni is a ex-officio member. And this year, we actually bid farewell to one of our aldermen. Michelle Moreno was the chair of the Audit Committee until just this year and did a phenomenal job. Thank you, Michelle. We also said farewell to Andy Marwidi, who also made a valuable contribution to the Audit Committee. This year, we held four meetings of the committee, January, April, July, and October. And in connection with our responsibility to the City Council, we reviewed the financial statements of the foundations with the city. We looked at the Senior Foundation, Corolla, Elawa, Parks and Rec, Ragdell, and the Gordon Community Center. The committee established a standing calendar to ensure that we review the committees, the foundations on a regular basis each year. The committee has continued the discussions of Gatsby Statements 67 and 68. As you know, these relate to the new pension requirements and the change that they will have on the city's financial statements over the next two years. Both the committee and the city staff are focused on being proactive in addressing these new standards and ensuring that we clearly communicate the implications of the standards that will go into effect. One of the big activities that we had was the review of the 2014 CAFR and the audit summary. I'm pleased to report that this year, we had another clean opinion, which meant that it was an unmodified accounting opinion. If you look at the government-wide financial statements on pages 16 and 17, you'll see that we have an accrual basis of accounting. The net assets of the city increased by $332,000 from $270.4 million to $270.7 million. Our capital assets are included in net assets, but they're not available for expenditure. The government includes roads, bridges, et cetera. They have a balance of $184 million. Our business-type assets include our water lines and sewers, and they totaled $36 million. If you look at the fund financial statements, the government funds on pages 18 to 21, you'll notice that, again, we use the modified accrual basis of accounting, and this shows both the major and the non-major funds. The major funds include general, parks and rec, and capital. The budgetary schedules are on page 61. You'll note that the general fund balance increased by $2.86 million, and this was the result of revenues exceeding expenditures. Our revenues were $1.1 million more than budgeted, and our expenses were also under budget. The management discussion and analysis on page 3 provides an excellent overview. There's a transmital letter in the introductory section, and the statistical section has trend data that begins on page 122. All of the financial statements are available for review on the city's website, www.cityoflakeforest.com. And the auditors provided us with a management letter with the recommendations from the auditors to the Audit Committee and the staff's comments to address the recommendations. This year, there were three recommendations. The first related to the library's year-end reporting procedures, related to accounts payable and fixed assets. We think the management team has an acceptable plan to address this. There was another recommendation as it related to pension participant data that's provided to the pension accountant, to the actuary. And then, with regard to parks and rec, there was a recommendation about software and registration procedures. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I'd like to recognize the excellence and dedication of the city's finance team, led by Elizabeth Hollab and, who is the finance director, and Diane Hall. Lake Forest has a very well-qualified finance team with a strong focus on excellence in controlling the city's finances as well as financial reporting. We're very grateful for the high quality of work that they produce, as well as the productive working relationship that they have established with the city's auditors and the Audit Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. If there are no questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the receipt of the audit report for fiscal year ended April 30, 2014.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any roll call vote, please, Biddy?
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, and Lucinda, thank you and your team for all the work that you've put forth. It's deeply appreciated. Item, next item on the agenda this evening, opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Item number 5, items for omnibus vote consideration, and tonight, there are five of them, as we always do. I'll read them all. If any council member would like to take them individually, we'll do so, otherwise I'll ask for a motion at the end. Item number 1, approval of the October 20, 2014 City Council meeting minutes. Number 2, check register for the period September 27 through October 24, 2014. Number 3, determination of an estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated by property taxes for the 2014 calendar year in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute and establishment of a public hearing date for the 2014 tax levy if required. Number 4, award of bid for the Stewart Room window replacement at Gorton Community Center included in the FY 2015 CIP budget. And number 5, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading of desire by the City Council, final approval. Any council member care to take any of those individually? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances, consideration of documents relating to corrective action at 260 East Illinois Road, the former site of ExxonMobil gas station to address environmental issues. Is this, Bob, is this you, or is it Vic? It looked like he was getting ready, so.
We had to wake him up.
City Attorney Victor Philippini.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. With respect to the property in question, which is the old mobile station at Illinois and...
Bank.
Bank, thank you. We have encountered on other occasions gas stations that have had leaking underground storage tanks and have had relating contamination on the subsurface soils. This is one of those. In order to allow those properties to be reused and redeveloped, most of them are looking for what's called a Tier 1 type of relief, which is under the so-called Brownsfield legislation. In order to do that, there's a need to address areas that may have been impacted by some of the bloom of that contamination. Oftentimes, it does seep into the surrounding streets, and the indication here is that it has also into our streets at, about this corner property. There are three actions that are before the council. Two relate to agreements between the city and ExxonMobil, and those relate to their responsibilities to cure any kind of contamination that might happen in the future, and also set up a protocol to the extent that there's any excavation in the streets of a material degree. The third is an ordinance that the city's asked to adopt, calling for a prohibition of any use of groundwater sources for potable water in the infected area. That third action is one that we have to do formally, but frankly, it's already on our books because of the public water system we have. So the actions that you're asked for tonight are to adopt a resolution which would authorize the execution of the agreement and supplemental agreement that are in your packet, and to adopt the ordinance which is required by the IEPAs part of this Brownsfield protection
Questions for Vic?
Who owns the property?
I believe that the Wad family interests own the property, but ExxonMobil is the one that owned the property when they had the leaking underground storage tank. So they bear the primary responsibility as the principal responsible party under both CERCA and RICRA, which are two of the primary environmental regulations. I don't know particularly what the arrangement was when the current owner acquired the property, but it's not uncommon that they get a hold harmless from the seller, and that's why ExxonMobil has been the primary force to move this forward and also is the one that's undertaking the clear responsibility for it.
And how was this discovered? Is it a normal process to test around gas stations?
I want to say about...
Why is this happening now, I guess?
No, no, about, I want to say it's about 18 years ago, the, through the state fire marshal, the General Assembly established a UST, Underground Storage Tank Regulation, in which all underground storage tanks had to be identified and then tested to see whether they were leaking. If they were leaking, there was a protocol to remove them. Whenever they were identified as having a leaking underground storage tank, there was a database created, and when someone wants to redevelop it, that's when the triggers occur. They have two choices, either they completely clean it, which would involve full excavation and removal of the impacted soils as special waste, which is a considerable expense. The other approach is to manage it more than eliminate it, and that's what this Brownsfield type of approach is directing at. And so what they're going to try to do is to create through engineering barriers a way of protecting any use of the property from potential contamination of the underground contamination. And moreover, and this is what that ordinance is directed, to make sure that no one's going to be using groundwater within that area as a potable water source.
Vic, let me just follow up on that a little bit, because I think you were starting to ask this, David, or maybe it was implied in your question. So if there was a hold harmless as a... So if there was a hold harmless as a part of the sale, which I think occurred at some, it's some fairly long time ago, I'm not sure if I remember exactly when that was, it might have been in that material. But it seems to me that we all know gas stations, this is kind of, this is kind of a routine problem. Wouldn't it make sense to try to have them deal with it before more seepage had occurred? I mean, is there any way, as a city, we had authority to do something about that at the time they vacated the land, or not? Maybe I'm just being naive about how this stuff works, but it seems to me, the hazard was always probably pretty likely to be real, and seepage, the longer you let it seep, the worse it gets, at least that would be my sense.
The underground storage tanks, when they were removed, pretty much ended any additional seepage. There is some potential spread of the plume, but it's also then at a much greater dilution than it would be otherwise. This is a protocol that has been established through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and the US EPA as a way of handling a problem without completely eliminating all of the sources of contamination. You know, it's really a cost-effectiveness approach. You know, the amount of money it might take to get rid of the last smidge of contamination really doesn't justify the expense, when there are other ways of protecting the public health in the same but lesser cost means.
So Vic, just maybe just to clarify from our perspective, you're saying that the next step, then, is environmental engineered barriers to restrict or limit whatever minimal amount of contamination there is on the site?
Well, there's two issues. One is what they're going to do on the property, and that's going to be a matter of what they deal with the IEPA about. It is likely that whatever improvements they're going to make is going to include some kind of impermeable cap, if you will, to prevent the upward seepage of any contamination. The part that you're dealing with tonight really relates to our rights-of-way, which have been affected by the bloom of that contamination. And, you know, again, it's not a serious issue because of the levels of contamination. And again, one of the things I should have mentioned, Alderman Beidler, is that you can't qualify for this program unless the levels of contamination are within certain ranges. This is not a highly toxic area, it's really just an area that has normal amount of gas station-related leakage. It's not something that you'd want to, you know, go play out in the sandbox with, but it's also not something that, if it's properly controlled, is going to cause any public health standards. That's at least what the IEPA has determined. So the part that you're dealing with tonight is really, how do we, with, in concert with ExxonMobil, work to make sure that whatever bloom is within the rights-of-way are not going to create a public health hazard? And so there's a protocol in the documents as to what has to occur when there's going to be any kind of excavation that may impact this. And at the time, you know, if there's going to be an excavation that's going to reach the level of the contamination, there's a notice requirement to ExxonMobil, and they have the obligation then to either correct it by excavating that soil and replacing it with clean soils, or having the city do that and reimburse the city, or a contractor of the city, as the case may be.
Any other questions for Vic?
You referred to the situation as not being, you know, highly toxic or what have you. The right-of-ways would be, if I'm remembering the site correctly, sidewalk and street-covered? Yes. That would be the city, the areas that the city would have... Right, and where it usually comes is if there's a street opening and somebody's going to do utility work, that's when the trigger for the notification process occurs. And in that circumstance, if we were going to have to trench the street for some reason in the area that's been contaminated, that would be the point at which we would say, okay, Exxon, it's time for you to step up and cover us for this. Right, and there, you know, there's a testing process that they can determine whether or not, or to what degree, any kind of cleanup has to occur. But there's a, there's a trigger, and that trigger then starts that process of testing and determination of what the cure is before the work begins. And so that's how this is implemented. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter? If not, I would ask the council, we need two separate approvals this evening. First is to approve a resolution approving the agreements and authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into agreements relating to corrective action related to environmental conditions at two sixty East Illinois. Do you have a motion approved?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, and then I need a motion to waive first reading of an ordinance relating to groundwater and grant final approval of such ordinance. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Again, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Thank you, Vic. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of amendments to Chapter forty-six, Sections thirty-seven and thirty-eight, single-family residence districts to permit granny flats or secondary living units on property zone for single-family use under certain conditions, and approve first reading, and presented by Kathy Serniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This recommendation comes to you from the Plan Commission. They've actually studied this concept for a while. The concept is granny flats, and I think at one point, it was clarified by Alderman Moore that granny flats aren't just for grannies. They're actually secondary living units that could come in various forms, apartments over garages, coach houses, outbuildings, pool houses. But the granny flats term has stuck a little bit, because the units often are old, they're quaint, they're eccentric, and they're small. So that's how we got to the granny flats term as background. The community has been having this discussion probably for about eighteen months. The concept of secondary living units on single-family properties was discussed at the strategic planning session. In two thousand and thirteen, Alderman Moore led a community engagement forum on the concept. It was actually quite well-received, the idea of really finding a way to use these outbuildings. The Plan Commission then, at the direction of the city council, held a work session, and then held a public hearing that spanned two meetings. After the first meeting, they actually directed some modifications to the proposed draft code language to address some of the comments that they heard at that public hearing. The community benefits, as this concept were discussed, really include moving toward the city's goal of assuring that we retain some diversity in housing, different price points, different size units, units that meet the needs of different types of families or individuals. This approach can encourage investment in some of the larger properties that have one or more outbuildings. As buyers are looking at those properties, sometimes we get the call, what can I do with this outbuilding? And right now, unless the outbuilding has been continuously used as a coach house, that opportunity to have a second living unit on the property is not available. And that relates to just generally enhanced use of properties. And finally, this also partners with historic preservation, the whole idea if the outbuildings, many of them historic, can be used for a gainful purpose, that that will encourage people to invest in those structures. The Plan Commission is recommending to you, there's an ordinance that begins on page, I think, two forty-five of your packet, it's before you for first reading this evening. Plan Commission is recommending that you open the door slightly on this issue. They recognize that this code amendment may not be perfect, but they feel that it's worthwhile to open the door, allow this use to be experienced by the community, and then a year, eighteen months from now, see if the door should be opened wider, see if there's some things that need to be corrected. The Plan Commission is recommending that granny flats or secondary living units be permitted in the large lot zoning districts in both R five and R four. R four has a minimum lot size of sixty thousand square feet. R four covers most of the east side of Lake Forest. R five is a larger lot zoning district. They recommend that the owner of the property be required to live in the main house on the property. They felt that absentee ownership of properties might result in more difficulty with secondary living units, if you have multiple rental structures on a property. They're recommending that this code amendment be limited to structures that predate the date of adoption of this code. The discussion about opening the door for someone to come in and build a new unit, that really is a different discussion and involves a much more intensive discussion about density. So at this point, they wanted to limit it to existing structures. They talked about setbacks, that is noted in the ordinance before you, some provision for onsite parking, and also requiring that these units be registered with the city. The Plan Commission felt strongly that that should be a simple process, that the city shouldn't necessarily receive a fee for that, but the point of registering these is really so that our police and fire understand that there's more than one living unit on the property. There are some other provisions in the code that's in the ordinance that's included in your packet, but those are really the highlights. Again, Alderman Moore has been involved in this since the beginning and has tracked the Plan Commission's discussion on that, so he may have more to add. This is before you, just for first reading tonight, simply because it's a new ordinance, there's no urgency. If you approve it tonight, we bring it back to you likely on the omnibus agenda at your next meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Could you, for perspective's sake, share the current number of eligible homes that we've been discussing, or you've been discussing?
That number was, is a little hard to come up with, but I thought you might ask...
Around a hundred and thirty, so you don't have to say it, right?
I thought you might ask that question, and although this map, the dots are a little hard to see, but we did put together a map that identifies outbuildings that might fall in this category. There's probably about a hundred and sixty or so properties, but when you really look at those, our guess is you're probably not going to see a whole lot of new housing units created through this. If we see twenty, that's probably where we're at. Sixty may be a number of properties that reasonably could do this, but I don't think people are going to be beating down our doors. The other thing this ordinance does is, in cases where coach houses or other outbuildings have been rented continuously, this allows them to come in, register, and really legitimize that use. It will no longer be a legal non-conforming use, but it will actually be permitted outright under the code. So our guess is that twenty is probably a good number of what you might see. This is not going to change the world or change the character of the community.
I would also like to add that in the community forum, the big takeaway for me, I think, was the excitement the realtors had in understanding that the cash flow from these houses at today's low-interest rates meant that people could pay a lot more for a house with an income stream coming off the property, and some of the higher-priced properties with these second incomes would end up getting off the market after four or five years. We really felt strongly about that.
I have a couple of comments slash questions. I approve of opening the door. I think there's a lot of, can be a lot of benefit to this, and I am thinking of some of those larger properties, like David said. You know, I think a young family moving into Lake Forest, or an older couple, or even a young professional would probably love to live in one of these coach houses. Where I get a little concerned is, and I think the Plan Commission tried to address this, but it's just something that maybe bears a little more exploration, is where there aren't large estate. I live in an R four zoning district. The lots in my neighborhood are modest, and there's a number of garage apartments in my neighborhood. I also live very near Lake Forest College. So I think that there are situations where this would work beautifully, and I think that it's possible, in some of those neighborhoods with smaller lots, that it, that there, that there might be situations where it doesn't work out quite as well. And I think the Plan Commission recognized this problem. I'm sure it was brought up at some of the community conversations, and I think, you know, I noticed that three or more unrelated people can live in the secondary unit. I understand that there's an ordinance that allows three or more unrelated, up to three unrelated people to live in a primary residence, but I question whether we need three or more unrelated people living in a secondary residence. We don't want, you know, a boarding house situation. So that's one thing that concerns me a little, and I do think that, you know, I see provisions where, again, I think the Plan Commission, you know, recognized the concerns that I have, and, you know, the owner needs to live on the property, and there needs to be adequate parking, and that all sounds very good, and I believe it's probably just about impossible to enforce. And I know we're not an enforcement group here, sitting up here, but how do you enforce whether three or more unrelated people live on a property unless you're a police officer staking out that property for a week? And our police officers have better things to do. And how do you enforce whether or not the owner really lives in the primary residence? And whether people aren't jockeying cars, you know, around to allow for parking? I think those things are difficult to enforce. So again, I think it's a great concept, and I think that it's, you know, would, is something that we should, we should go ahead and go forward on, but I don't know if there's anything that you can think of, Kathy, that could further address some of my misgivings.
Alderman Waldeck, you are correct. The Plan Commission talked about those very things, and some of those issues also apply to single-family homes that are rented. And I know in your neighborhood, there are some single-family homes that are rented for college students, and in fact, in some enforcement cases, we do work closely with the police, and we stake out essentially the properties and check license plates, and we have pursued some cases where we've seen more than three unrelated people who appear to be living in the house. The Plan Commission did try to address some of those issues. I think having the owner live on the property was a key component that gave them more comfort. There also is a requirement for a twenty-foot setback. There's an opportunity for an owner to request a variance from that setback, but I think that addresses some of the smaller lot properties that might be located in the R four district. So again, the Plan Commission recognized that this may not be perfect, and that there may be problems, and certainly, further amendment of this later on, or complete elimination of it is certainly a possibility, but...
Is there really a need to have three or more, up to three unrelated people, living in an accessory building? A family in a coach house, an elderly couple in a coach house? You know, that's not three or more unrelated people. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, and again, I think that, you know, efforts have been made, but it's very hard to enforce whether or not somebody actually lives in the residence. So I don't know if anybody else has, again, I'm in favor of this. I just, I don't know if anybody else has any ideas of something that might be done to tighten it up a little bit.
One of my concerns would be the parking issue. You mentioned single-family homes that already appear to be occupied by larger numbers of people. Some of the more rundown properties on Western Avenue, frequently, you can drive by them, and there will be five or six cars parked in the front yard of those homes. And when I think about this, and I think about three unrelated kids, you immediately think of college students, or, you know, perhaps some people who are working in the restaurants or whatever in Lake Forest. And you say onsite parking, but onsite parking for how many cars? Because assuming there are three unrelated people, does that mean they can park three cars in the front yard? Or is it onsite parking for one car? Is it covered parking, or is it, I mean, what are these things? Because, again, just thinking of the smaller properties around, I could imagine, you know, having an above garage facility and having a yard with three or four cars parked out, and I don't think we want that.
The Plan Commission, at one point... The plan commission at one point had language included in here that spoke more specifically to parking, and they actually received testimony from, from realtors, from some owners of some of these larger properties, that to make this work, there needs to be some flexibility. So the plan commission did discuss parking. I think they, I don't remember the, the earlier language, but I think they had a number of spaces in there, and they chose to move away from that. Again, trying to balance opening the door, providing protection, but also providing flexibility and not making this so onerous that no one actually takes advantage of it.
I mean, you're going to get a lot of people parking on the street, too, in certain neighborhoods. Or like I said, a jockeying of cars, you know, in and out of driveways, on and, on and off of streets. I'm not saying it's a horrible thing. I'm just saying, I, I can foresee that. It, I, I think it becomes a little more problematic with the smaller properties. I, I do. I think it works really, really well for all the reasons that you've stated and David stated. With the larger properties, it's just terrific. And I, I don't know. I don't know how we-
I would like to move forward with this. A lot of those issues can be revisited. You know, I don't think, I don't think we're, the plan commission or city council is smart enough to cover every contingency known to mankind. And I think trying this thing, we'll see whether it's a good thing. And I, I think everybody here probably believes that it is. And those additional regulations can always come back and be revisited at six months or nine months after the concept has been, has been tried. So I think I'd be in favor of moving forward, knowing full well that it may not be, it may not be perfect. And again, we're probably not smart enough to, to come up with anything this evening that could be totally perfect.
But don't you think it's better to be more restrictive upfront and ease it when you realize how it works rather than trying to undo it? And I particularly make that point about the parking. I just can't imagine, once you do this, and all of a sudden you allow these relatively small properties to have this, and all of a sudden you find out there are three or four cars parked in the front yard, because that's how you make money. Not only are you renting the unit above, but you're letting people park off the street in your front yard, and you're charging money for it. And then after the fact, you know, these people gussy these things up and do it, and now you say, okay, and now we're going to pull it out from under you. I would much rather see something where we say, okay, you know, three people unrelated, okay, but no more than two cars on these particular things, and you have to have an actual place to park them. They can't be parked in the grass or other things. I mean, it just seems to me, if you're going to start with stump, something, start with it a little bit more restrictive. If you find out it's too restrictive, you can loosen it up. I just think it's much easier than going backwards.
I agree, and I, I think everyone's in favor of it, and I don't see any sense of urgency. And if there's a way we can tighten it up a little bit, we're not-
Well, I'm not in favor of it. I mean, everybody's in favor of what?
I think everyone is-
Of tightening it up?
No, no. I think, I think in general, everyone's in favor of these granny flats, that we all think it's a good idea.
Oh, yes.
I think that-
I think it would be difficult to get them established and going if they were very restrictive. And it would be a lot of work without a lot of, it's difficult to walk into something that's so regulated and so controlled, where there's no wiggle room to get anything done. I think it would be rather stifling for people to, to realize that the only thing they could do is have their son live there with one car, which is how it might be perceived if we proceed contrary to the, to the work that the plan commission's done with a more broad approach of, to Jack's point, of allowing it to happen and then seeing if we need to tighten things up. I think it's also important to remember that if you park cars at night in areas you're not allowed to park, you get tickets. If you have a lot of parties, you get arrested. If you, there's all kinds of support-
David, those happen a lot in my neighborhood.
If there's, there's, there's all kinds of support for, for problems that can arise from, from bad housing situations. And I had a question-
This isn't, this isn't the only community in the United States that has this, you know? I mean-
Right.
It's all over the East Coast. I mean, I've, we moved here from Philadelphia after living there for 13 years, and all of those big estates in Bryn Mawr and Gladwin, not all of them, but many of them, had these kind of situations where the demographics are changing and nobody can support these, these old established properties. And, you know, and they do this. And I, I, I'm not-
Well, concepts of loosening of regulation-
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a big reg guy. I think you can put together something that you'll think will work and then come back and change it if it doesn't. I, I don't know. It's just not that-
I had a question, Kathy-
Is it, is it just the parking that you're concerned with?
It's, it's a number of things. It's, it is the, it is the parking, and it is, and again, I am, am for this. I would like to see, to take, us to take maybe just a little more time to explore it, to see if we can work a little harder, you know, on, on this ordinance to ma, to maybe tighten it up a, a little bit. I think it works extremely well, like I said, on large estates. I think it would, it's, it's a great thing for these large homes and, that have these, these coach houses and existing units. And it was where your, I don't know, your gardener lived, or your butler, or your chauffeur, or, or any of those things.
Can you revisit the square footage requirements again?
But, 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 in, you know, certain neighborhoods, one of which I live in, we have very small lots. We have garages with apartments. There's several on my street. And these are not estates. These are more modest-sized lots and modest-sized homes, and there's not adequate parking for multiple people to live in, in, in a garage. And there, I, I think you, there's certain sorts of people that you want to attract to our community. And, you know, a young couple that's just gotten married, and maybe they grew up here and they want to move back here, we love those people. We want to have those people in our community, older people, young professionals. There are certain sorts of people that we want to, we want to cater to, and that this would be just a wonderful thing for those, for those people. I mean, a, a young family, I, I think a coach house would be terrific. But there's other situations that's, that's, that's not, maybe not so good. And, and there are-
Can what you're saying be defined?
I don't like the way it sounds, frankly.
I don't know.
See, Kathy, what I'm hearing is, is something that you say you want it, but you, we're going to, we're going to admire this thing in bureaucracy and regulation.
Would the smaller lots have an opportunity to even have this? I don't even, it's 60,000 feet, right?
R4.
Something that, that may help answer some of the questions. If, if you choose to move this forward with first reading, we could certainly provide you with a zoning map that shows you the R4 and R5 areas. That's something that the plan commission looked at. The plan commission did consider whether, because there are some lots that are smaller than the 60,000 square foot minimum in the R4 zoning district, but it tends to be more of the larger lot neighborhoods. The plan commission did look at whether there should be a minimum lot size for which this should be considered. So if, if you wish to move this forward between first and second reading, we can provide you with some more information and some options that, that you can discuss and see if those are determined to provide too much regulation, or if you find that they make you more comfortable. We can also clarify some other provisions in the code. For instance, currently, the code does not allow parking on, on grass or a non-hardscape surface. Certainly, people do that. We enforce that by complaint. We don't go looking for it. But if it was a situation where there was a secondary living unit and cars were parking all over the grass, that would be a violation of another part of the code. So we could also provide you with more information on, on some of those provisions that may work with this. I don't know if that-
It would help me.
Gets you more comfortable.
It would help me, yes.
Could I ask another clarifying question? And this one's on the registration. So how does registration work? If, if, if a homeowner in either R5 or R4 is considering doing this, do they come and register that property before they offer it for rent? Do they register it with the city and show you some sort of a plan and make sure that that's habitable space and that they, and they can show you the plan for parking? Or do they go ahead, rent it, have somebody in there, and then come and say, just so you know, this is now a, a secondary living unit? I'm just not sure how the registration process works.
The idea is that the registration would be a contact with the city in advance of renting, although in some cases, you have some of these units that are currently rented as nonconforming units today. We have not developed the details of the registration process because this isn't, hasn't been adopted by the city council yet. But we would look at that, because there also is a provision here that speaks to building code and life safety issues. So we would want to make sure that the space that is being rented meets a minimum, not, not something that would need to meet all of today's codes, but does meet some minimum life safety requirements.
I think that's hugely important. And it seems to me that if the registration process, and I understand that people who are already doing this, and that, that, you know, they would, they would come and, and, you know, not kick people out and start over, but just let you know that this is already going on on their property. But it seems to me this could solve some of our problems, because if part of the registration process requires a parking plan that's filed with the registration, this is where the cars are. I mean, I do think that that's, you know, that that's incredibly helpful. I have to agree. I think that in, in the sense of worrying about, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, and it's, to me, it's a, it's an easy decision on the R5, and it gets more complicated on the R4. Three unrelated people are very likely, I mean, very likely, I would say, to have three cars. So it's not always an easy thing for anybody to, I mean, why do we have landscaping trucks parking all over the streets? It's because people don't have big enough driveways for trucks to turn around and so on. Three cars negotiating most driveways is going to be, it's going to be, it could be very complicated. So it seems like if the homeowner who wants to rent the space says, this is the parking plan, you know, this is what I'm planning to do, this is the parking plan, and presumably there's some process that approves the space for habitation. If it has not been used before, then, then that ameliorates in my mind some of these concerns. It makes it clear that this has to be appropriate space, and I assume that, well, anyway, it just seems like the process of it, not to be a deterrent, but to make it clear that we take this seriously, that if you're going to offer people places to live, then we want it to be an appropriate place that doesn't, doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. I don't think that's a terrible-
I agree.
I think that's our job.
I don't think that's too onerous either. I mean, we, we have neighborhoods where people have been living in houses for 20, 25 years, you know, paying taxes, and now all of a sudden you're telling them, hey, three unrelated people can move into your neighbor's garage. So I don't think that it's unduly, I, I, I don't think it's unduly burdensome to, to ask somebody to, to provide that.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I think one of the other things, I'm sorry to jump in here. I think part of what we haven't been able to do is sort of set the context of this perspective as well, because I think we've been bouncing around this. There are a lot of these that are out there right now, but you don't know it, because they've been functioning properly pursuant to many of the same ordinance, or the same regulations that we're talking about here. I think the key one that we're forgetting is owner onsite, because the owner onsite, they're going to do their own policing. Most of the problems in Alderman Waldeck, I think, everybody knows some of the properties you're talking about, those tend to be owner not onsite. And I think that we can't lump them all together, I think is what we have to be careful doing. And I think what we can do, which I think the plan commission had the benefit of hearing, is bring people who currently are doing this and explain how this is working and how they do it to protect the cars that are parking, because I think to Alderman's tax point, we do have codes that are in place right now, whether it's for granny flats or any other property in town, on how we control that. And so it's just a matter of enforcement, once we know that that's an issue out there. But I think then you have a little better perspective, because we don't want to lump all these together, because I think they are very distinct and different from rental, non-owner onsite versus rental with owner onsite.
And owner onsite, how do we enforce that? I mean-
Well, that's easy. I mean, because we have the information on water billing. We know who's living on that property. Now, if they, if they put their name on the water bill and they don't show up, we're going to find that out from their neighbors. I mean, that's, that's easy enough to enforce from a police or a community inspector standpoint. That, that doesn't bother me at all in terms of this issue.
Can I, I have, I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to get a word in edgewise here. First of all, I'm frankly very concerned about some of the comments that have been made by the city council tonight and the tenor of them. And I think we ought to all go back and, and look at the tape of this meeting and rethink some of the statements that have been made. That's just a general point. I think that, I think a number of the suggestions that Alderman Biedler made were very constructive and are a great idea. And I think how that registration process is managed is going to be critical in preventing the kind of thing that, that Alderman Waldeck is concerned about. I think that, I don't know if the plan commission considered a carve-out for, you know, nonconforming plot properties in an R4 zone. You know, a, a 30,000-foot lot in an R4 zone that happens to have an apartment over the garage, and perhaps a single-lane driveway with a one-car garage underneath that apartment. You know, that kind of thing, I think, I suppose it could, should be dealt with in the registration process for sure. And if they didn't, if they didn't make a carve-out for that or an exclusion for that. One thing here that concerns me most, I think, of all the things here, and nobody's mentioned it, is this item C that says each accessory structure meets the minimum health and life safety requirements of the building codes adopted by the city. Are we going to require all these units to be brought up 100% to current building code? Because I think that's going to shut the whole thing down.
No. In fact, and we may need to write that differently, but, but the point was that we would inspect them for minimum health and life safety conditions. We would not require, in fact, many of the historic homes in town are, are not up to today's code. So no, this, this was very clearly to assure that minimum health and life safety requirements are met, not current code requirements.
Okay. Because we have home inspection, I mean, you have to have inspections for all kinds of things. And, you know, why we wouldn't be able to have inspections of these units prior to their becoming occupied, a perfectly reasonable thing for us to be able to do. But I think if we, we have to be careful not to make it too onerous, because it will effectively stifle the whole program or the whole, the whole concept.
Can I ask you one more question, maybe, and I just missed it? So for each one of these units that's eligible for this, are they required to be full-scale living units? In other words, you know, bathroom, shower, and legitimate kitchen space? Or are these places that can have, you know, a toilet and a hot plate on something to, and, and saying that you can now have three people living in here, just, and, you know, this is a, is a full-fledged living space? You know, my sense is that for me, I'd want to know that these actually are real apartments that you can have people practically live in. I mean, and again, the college student thing, college students can live, you know, under your back stairs. I, you know, I live, my fraternity was sort of like that. But I don't know that you necessarily want that here, and I don't know if this ordinance addresses that point. And if it doesn't, I sure would like to see it address that point.
The, the ordinance does address that. It does require a minimum requirements for a living unit, which does include a bathroom and a kitchen. This, this couldn't be a situation where you just have a bedroom and have a hot plate. So yes, the ordinance does attempt to create those minimum standards of what it takes to create a living unit.
Kathy, I, I think your offer to come back, given its first reading, come back with some clarification, some additional information is really helpful, and I think that makes a great deal of sense. Let me also ask, is there anyone in the public tonight that would like to make a comment on this item?
I have a question that's unrelated to this.
Okay. Okay. Seeing none, go ahead, Alderman Moore.
I'm, I'm ashamed to ask this question, because I'm on the Housing Trust, but if, if successful, or if partially successful, would these homes help to contribute to our affordable housing stock?
Certainly.
And increase the percentage as it relates to our oblig, our, what is it called? An obligation or intention to comply with the non-home rule limits?
Some of the units may rent for-
Too much.
Too much, because some of them are, are pretty unique. But, but yes, it, it could add a few units. Again, I, I think from our investigation, we're probably talking about a handful of units. We're probably not talking about 30, 40, 50.
And I think-
But yes, this, these would add to that number.
To some of the points made earlier, I think there's a, there's a real material difference between two unrelated people and three unrelated people, especially in a smaller unit. So that might be a, something that they might want to take a peek at, too.
Yeah, a, a follow-on to Prue's comments. Registration, I think, is a, a good path. Would the vehicles on the premises be required to acquire Lake Forest license registrations? Permits? I'm sorry, permits?
I have to look at Finance Director Elizabeth Halib. If, if someone's a resident, they, our code would require them to, to get a city sticker, yes.
So for other city services, then, water is by volume, so that goes to a single address. address. Are the granny flats at this, at one address for the property? Or do they have kind of like an A and B?
Currently, we do have some secondary units that have a separate address. And I believe we have some that have a separate meter, so those would, someone would receive two water bills. But not all of them. Some of them are served from a single service.
And are there perhaps other services that we could anticipate would be charged independently for city services that would be used at that residence that would be incremental to a single address? Or is that...
Not as anticipated. We didn't assume that we would charge a separate garbage collection fee, although if there are two water bills, that, that would be the case.
Thank you.
I think the discussion's been really healthy and has surfaced a lot of interesting ideas and certain, some things to have Kathy and staff follow up on. So I think at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve first reading of the ordinance approving a code amendment to permit secondary living units in the R4 and R5 zoning districts under certain conditions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, one other thing, when, when you look at this ordinance, I think you got the dates wrong in the ordinance when you talk about the dates of the Plan Commission meeting? Because I watched them today and there was no June 10, 2014 meeting. It was in July. So I know it's really minor, but you might just want to double-check that.
I will correct that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, new business. Any new business to come before the council?
Seeing none, council will move ahead and I'm going to ask for a motion to take the council into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or lease of real property for the use of a public body, including the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And the City Council also discussing the consideration for the sale and lease of property owned by the public body, as well as a semi-annual review of the minutes mandated by Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Need a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved. Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Exhiring to executive session.
And Mr. Mayor, I might just mention for the benefit of those in the audience and watching at home that the only action item that we are anticipating coming out of the closed session this evening is the approval of the minutes.
Great. Thank you, Bob, very much. All right, council is in executive session.